First item on our agenda is consider new hires in secondary roads department with possible actions. A, Andrew Butler, road maintenance tech, effective August 19th, 2019. B, Zachary Bean, road maintenance tech, effective August 19th, 2019. And C, Toby Hill, motor grader two, effective August 26th, 2019. Go ahead and motion.
I would move A, B, and C.
Second.
Any discussion?
Shaw?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, item number two, consider P-25 radio communication site development RFP recommendation with possible action to award contract. Do I have a motion?
I would move it.
I'll second. Any discussion? Okay, Jason.
Shaw?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, item three, we can't start until 9:00 PM?
You have to move the presentation ahead of time.
Right.
It can start anytime, the public hearing doesn't start till noon.
Right, so what we're gonna have is our presentation, and that is by DCI, they are our construction manager.
Morning, everyone, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Nick Brock, project manager of the DCI group. It was suggested by the board today that I give a brief presentation on the board counting justice center project. I'm gonna start out by just going out and discussing a little bit of where we started, how things progressed through design, and where we are today. And in part, the reason we're doing this and discussing this is, right now, the board has some options in front of them on how to proceed, and I would like to go over a couple of those options. Just wanna start off with the bond referendum and the campaign. If you remember back, last June is when the board reviewed and selected and determined an amount of $31.1 million for the project, and also set the language for the special election or bond referendum vote, which occurred, I believe, on August 7th. That bond referendum language is in part very similar to what's up there in terms of description about what departments are gonna be in the facility, how large the facility's gonna be, and how that facility would be equipped. Again, this is just what I just discussed, but that's just, that reference there is just the actual meeting minutes from June 8th, but just those couple items highlighted. August 7th, the bond referendum passes. Shai Hattery, the architect, DCI group, and the county immediately started meeting to start the design process. The checkpoints between the bond referendum and bid day, there's essentially three checkpoints that we do an estimate based on the design progression. You've got the schematic design, then you've got design development, and you've got what's called a 50% construction document stage. Those occurred in October of 18, January of this year, and May of this year. We measure those back to what's called pre-bond referendum state of probable cost. That was an item that was developed last May, well before the bond referendum. Just a couple I wanna review and summarize. There were a lot of meetings that took place between the county and the architect. There were public meetings, there were meetings before the bond referendum. There was a Citizens Advisory Committee. There were a lot of things that I wanted to just re-discuss, so everybody can remember where we were at and where we ended up today. The picture up top, obviously, is the former courthouse. The diagram below is the proposed site plan for the courthouse. As far as the building orientation goes, the building, the former building, the entrance was on the east side, that's been maintained. The staff parking was the strategy. What was planned in the beginning for staff parking is different than what it is today. That staff parking has been resolved and the number of spots have been maintained. The future building addition strategies that were planned well over a year ago, those strategies have been modified, but the building, based on the way it's oriented on the site, will allow for expansion out to the west if that day comes and that decision is made. With the size of this building and with the requirements that are out there in the world today, the site infrastructure and stormwater management is something new, new to the site, not new to us, but new to the site. And we now have to store stormwater on-site temporarily before it leaves the site. So that front yard on the east side, you'll see some rectangular cells. That's an area that's underground, where that water is temporarily stored. So that's an area where you normally would look ahead and say, "We're not gonna put any building over that area." From a facilities operation, the north side of the site was and continues to be where deliveries come in, garbage is picked up, that's where electricity comes in, that's where the water comes in, that's where the emergency generator is, that hasn't changed. During the past 12 months, I'm sure a lot of you are aware, the city of Indianola started to think about a city street state project. We did meet along with Shai Hattery and the county and the city before they even proposed anything to the citizens about what they were gonna do. And the purpose of that was, they wanna understand what we were doing, we wanna understand what they were doing to make sure that we weren't heading in different directions. Those meetings were relatively brief. I think we didn't really come out of those meetings with anything significant that we were gonna have to do. It was discussed that if the city decided to go to two-way streets, what could we do to accommodate our site? Because if you notice, our site continues to show the one-way and the diagonal parking. We just simply said that we would change that parking to accommodate those two-way streets. And that's what came out of that. Another thing that we addressed during the demolition of the courthouse project is public stormwater improvements. Formally, the city's stormwater system went through the square. It now goes around the square. So we removed that system, improved it, and got it out of the way for the future new building. Where we are today, because of bid results, we're in a fork in the road. And over the course of the past month, we've evaluated options. Now, there's tons of options. You could throw out options all day long. But based on what the county has communicated to us through the bond referendum, through the meetings for the past 12 months, on what the county needs, and trying to maintain the intent of the bond referendum, we've evaluated two options. Option number one is approving the current project details as they are. And that really means increasing the budget, approving the current good bid packages, value engineer some elements out of the building to reduce the cost, and allow our bidders to evaluate starting this fall versus this spring. Now, to add some substance to these options, I put in what are pros and cons that I came up with. This is by means, all of them, this is what comes off the top of my head. A pro is maintaining the current program and county's needs, as that's been communicated to us. We preserve the current good bids, we're able to manage the construction schedule impact of rebidding, and understand when the project would be complete and the owner would be able to move in and use the facility. We relieve the county of having any additional staff hours for design. They can go back to their normal jobs. And we don't have to concern ourselves with inflation and devaluing. Doesn't impact us, we're moving on with what we got. A con, obviously, is the budget. You're gonna have to increase the budget. A con is the uncertainty of rebid results if you go back out to bid. And then, the most distasteful one for me personally is if you go out to bid, rebid, and those bids are not acceptable, you're gonna have to terminate, for convenience, the bids that you did accept today. Option two is to just flat-out reject the current project details. That would be, that would mean maintaining the current budget, reprogramming the use of the facility, redesigning the project, and rebidding the project. My list is a little weighted to one side, but the only pro on that that DCI group sees is that you get to maintain the current budget. The cons on that, you're gonna lose programming of some sort in order to accomplish that. That's either gonna mean programmed space or programmed use of the building. You're gonna have redesign expenses. County staff is gonna have to reconvene and spend more hours participating in a redesign effort. Inflation doesn't go away. So we're gonna have to deal with inflation and then uncertainty of the market impact, uncertainty of bid results in the future. With that process, we don't have an ability to forecast when the county could move in and use the facility. The county would have extended expenses for transporting and housing inmates, which they're currently doing now, but they'll have to do it for longer. With that, the county has extended expenses for multiple facilities to operate their normal services they provide. And if the reprogramming results in some loss of program, there is the potential where they might have to use the annexed facilities they're using today to supplement the new justice center on the square. So again, that's the options ahead of us today. I just, like I said, I wanted to be brief. I wanna kinda hit the highlights of where we were, the process to date, and then where we are today.
Thank you. The board's having questions for DCI.
Nick, maybe just real quickly, we have talked about maybe taking a couple million an hour current bid. And we think we can do that. Which would move it back to about 35 years.
Correct.
Okay, well, I can have nine o'clock, and then I'll move on. So at this point, I'd like to open up the meeting to a public hearing. We are gonna be limiting the time to three minutes, so we can have everyone get a chance to speak. I would like for you to address your questions in your comments, and I will do my best to write them down, and then have, at the end of public comment, have those respected entities to answer those questions. Okay, I would take a motion to open this up to a public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Shaw?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, the time is now yours.
So I have a couple questions or comments.
Can you please state your names first?
Oh yeah, I didn't hear that. AM 1500 Plague West, Indianola. So looking at this from the bond point of view, with the 29 million, the bonding included underground parking, which did not take up as much green space, which is important to a lot of Indianola residents, included a third floor, which again, didn't take up as much green space. So really, when we look at this from the bond point of view, we were more 15, 20 million dollars over budget if you include underground parking, the third-floor structure. Now, there are plans for additions to the west, but again, to state it up, the way that I look at the plans, we're looking at maybe the southeast little section there, green space. So that's just a question for you guys is, are we, you know, bids came in at $7 million over. Isn't it more kind of that 15 to 20 ones you take all that into account? Thank you.
Morning, Justin Peterson, I live at 10206 Highway 92. You know, I haven't been to one of these things where I get to see the public speech, and I don't know what the proper procedures and what we can say and what we can't say or do, but... I guess I'm not here to point fingers or shift blame or anything like that. I just wanna make sure that we have all the options on the table and that we're spending taxpayer dollars and maximizing the use of a facility for $30 million for future generations. My question is, is how long is the expectancy of this building? And from my understanding, it barely meets the current needs that we're using and needing today. So if that's the case, I believe we're at a crossroads to make a decision. You three people are in a very powerful position for over 50,000 residents of Warren County. The decisions you make can affect the county positively and negatively and for future generations. I wanna make sure that we're spending the money wisely to where it benefits our grandchildren, that we aren't doing another building in 15 years and spending another over $30 million. You did answer a few questions on the expansion. It sounds like you addressed some of those with the growth to the west of the building, which then takes away current parking as it is designed. So what do we do with that? I guess we're at a crossroads where do we scrap the entire project and start over to where we can meet needs of future growth of the county? Or do we just build a building for 30 million just because that's what we got approved for? I don't know the policies. I don't know, understand all the ins and outs of county politics, county policies, county's procedures, county laws. But I do know that we're at a spot that if you approve any part of the bid packages, we're stuck with what we got. And if it takes more time to reevaluate and to do this thing right, then we should take the time to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. I know there's more people that wanna speak, come on.
Name's Dean Emery. My question's simple. Where are you gonna get the money to come up to finish this project? Second of all, you're building a building that's probably gonna have to be redone in five years if you downsize it. And my understanding, your first go-around, you had a proposal where you'd had everything on property plus expansion, and it was a $37 million bid. And now you're above that by adding this, plus what you took out. So you're already above $20 million above budget, just so we can keep it on the square. So my concept is, why don't we just level it, put a little music thing there, put a toilet in each end, everybody gets their happiness, and get people to come in and have their party, carve everything else, and we go build somewhere else where we don't have to expand in five years.
I can't exactly compel anyone to speak, but I think it might be beneficial to hear from the users. I see a few of them in the audience that I think the public might welcome user thoughts. That's an appropriate time for this.
Sorry, I didn't play those things anyway, but I do think that, sorry, Nicole, White Dexter, Wilson, and Vanjeff. 1314 East Clinton, Indianola. I do see a lot of misinformation and different opinions, just on Facebook, because that's where they're at. So I think what you guys have in plan for goals for the use of the facility needs to be a little more streamlined and communicated to the public, because there's still people writing opinions about the renting out the spaces and the extra inmate space and different things. And it's like, I think about what it's gonna over with. But your local community is incredibly intelligent. We all have very good critical thinking skills. So I think if you would share that information, you would get a lot more positive feedback. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Let me take a break tack and thank each of you for your hard work. I know that policy is not much fun. Oh, I'm Charlie Shaw, 101 Phila Place, not here anymore. I know that policy is not always too much fun. I know some of you inherited this mess, certainly, and we appreciate from the city side what you're doing in order to keep our public safety officials safe and, of course, our citizens have the usable space as well. I just wanted to reiterate again that I appreciate the work that you're doing. I know it's very difficult to come up with consensus from your constituents as it is from mine, but I would encourage you to reject the bid packages as they are currently, just because of the fact that everything is currently so much under the air. As a gentleman, a couple times before me said, I believe that we need to get this right as mayor of this city as well as a constituent. It's really important, obviously, that we have usable space, not only for the city, but most importantly, for the county and for the public safety officials there. So just let me say thank you for your time and your effort. I know that you do not enter these positions lightly and that you have taken a lot of constituent concerns and harder than I know. Having known all three of you for some time now, that you'll do what's best for the city. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Christopher Patterson. I'm the district court administrator for the Fitzgerald District, which includes Warren County. I'm not here as a taxpayer of Warren County. I'm here as a representative of the judicial branch. And I just rise to voice my concern on behalf of the judicial branch that the current plans, as I understand them, the current facilities that would be dedicated to court use is insufficient. And when I say that, I mean insufficient in terms of long-term projections, in terms of what the court's workload will be and the amount of space that would be required to utilize or for the court to function efficiently and effectively. We have made no secret that we believe, based on our projections, that we would need in the future six fully functional courtrooms. It's my understanding that the current proposal includes four courtrooms, but only three jury deliberation rooms. I understand that budgets matter, and I don't stand before you pretending to have solutions to the very difficult position that you, as a board, face today. Again, I'm just merely here to voice concern that the building, that's built in whatever form, that it meets the present as well as the future needs of the courts to allow us to operate in an efficient, effective, and also safe manner. So again, a lot of difficult decisions ahead, and we stand as both a user group, a shareholder, if you will, in these decisions. But we do acknowledge and appreciate the board's leadership in this matter, and we trust that you all do the best thing for your constituents as well as for the user groups. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Rubel, 1315 North 7th Street. My biggest concern, a lot of it is the timing of these meetings. I mean, as we look out across here, a lot of these folks are retired. Hey, great, they earned that right. What about the people that are gonna be continuing to be here and pay this bill? What happened to, we were gonna buy land south of town, build this wonderful courthouse, and then we were gonna go east of town, build this wonderful facility that nobody seemed to want? So we all of a sudden throw this together, put it on our county square, come up with a bond, and where did we come up with the numbers for this bond? How can we be off so far right now that, okay, we wanted the courthouse down. We got the courthouse down, and now what are we doing? Because it's gonna turn around and cost my kids, my grandkids, and now we wanna put up a facility that doesn't meet today's needs? You know, so who's accountable? What happened to the bond that the people voted on? Where did those numbers come from? Where did those numbers come from?
Skid Phillips, thirteen forty-one Brown Street. My concern is that, and it sounds like a number of others, that we don't have the expandability that we need. One of the strategies that we had looked at for the future was to supersize the structures underground if well is going up, so that we could add another floor, which would have taken care of the expansion. I think it was a mistake to lose that. Number two, if we were to expand it, and even possibly do some additional spaces that we could rent out, that could be taken over by the county later as they're needed, that might be a strategy. A third strategy would be to not finish certain areas, or to finish them in a rather austere way, so that it could be made fancier and nicer when the budget comes to availability. Thanks.
For vote, two seven South Kedlin, four bar. I guess I am echoing most of what has been said here, but I think it's important that you do hear the multitude of repetition. I, along with a mass majority, I think, are disappointed at where we're at. But this is where we're at. So moving forward, I think I do want to say the expansion issue is big. And as a resident, you know, this isn't our only concern. We think we all know that we have a lot of projects besides this one sitting in front of us that have million-dollar price tags on them right now. And it's not just at the county level, now that, you know, we've got a beautification project that they're looking at, they have a maintenance building, the YNCA is asking for money, you know, the list kind of is big, and the money has to come from somewhere. So I think we need to pause and look at all the options before we just dig into a space that clearly, in my opinion, isn't going to, it's not going to maintain the project past thirty years, and we'll get back here and doing the same thing over again, spending some more money. You know, we want people to come into our community, and, you know, bad press doesn't do that for us. So I would like, you know, really make some good decisions moving forwards when we're not back in the spot again. And I'm not sure, and I could be wrong in this, I hope he asked this question for me, but when we pass the bond, and maybe it's inappropriate that the city would have an opinion on the design of the building, but with it being on the square, I guess, nobody ever gave us different proposals to look at. You know, do we want it to be this new beautiful glass building? Do we want to go with the character, say like how Winterset has, you know, the kind of courthouse they have, something old and rustic? I don't know, but to me, the design of the building was never brought forward to anybody. It was just like, we pay for a building, here it is. And it, there was a lot of pushback from a lot of people that I heard from in the first place, so I was disappointed that that, I don't remember that discussion happening. And I agree with what Rick had to say about the time of the meetings. Yes, meetings have been open to the public in the past, lots of meetings have happened, but a lot of people who are taxpaying citizens in residence are at work. And so it's very difficult to come and express your opinion when you're at work. Instead, you're watching it after decisions are made, and then there's nothing to do about it. So I would really like to see this board meet. I know that you would like to meet during your work hours, but I would like for you to meet after hours when our residents are home. I think that's big in Warren County, in the work bedroom community, and that's when we come back and forth. So that would be my, Rick. Thank you.
Carrie, eight three one five zero zero, Avenue Avenue. I'm going to start by saying I wasn't in favor initially to begin with. But I think right now, we've already spent a substantial amount of money getting through the design stage. I think they've established what they need for programming, and now they want to look at tape and some of that out. The cost to go back through and reprogram this, redesign, we're still going to spend millions of dollars, or we're going to end up with less. And we're still in the hole for what we've done so far. I am encouraging to people to go on with this and get a bill. Stop the delays, don't waste another six months for redesign, and move forward.
Morning. Name is Andrew Wood, I reside at two one seven zero seven one hundred twentieth Avenue, Indianola Avenue. And I understand, the current program or project was supposed to be eighty thousand square feet of functional workspace. As it stands, that has been reduced. I have that part in the nation here, by the way. So it has been reduced, which it does affect the personnel working in this construction. That's as of now. I think we have heard from several very credible personnel today that it does not even meet what would be today's workload. How can we possibly go ahead with this and flip the bill five years down the road for another courthouse?
Thank you.
My name is Jamie Krueger, I live at three eleven East Boston, here in Indianola. I both live and work in Indianola, and I just, again, want to echo most of the sentiment here today. I think we've been oversold and underdelivered on what we're going to end up getting here. The bond referendum, as Tom said, you know, we ask for excellent dollars with the promise that we'll have everything that we need for, I don't know, well into the future. And obviously, hindsight is twenty twenty, we can all look back and say, without a shadow of doubt, that's not possible. We cannot get what you promised done for that money. I think it would be foolish to move forward, just for the sake of moving forward. I think, again, if we're going to spend the money, let's take the time, let's spend it wisely. I know there's going to be some increased costs with housing inmates, temporary facilities, that sort of thing, but if we're talking a twenty million dollar expansion in ten years, that's peanuts to spend right now. I'll also leave this here with you, again, you know, nine o'clock warnings on Tuesdays is terrible for the vast majority of the people that are paying for this building. There's at least two hundred and two signatures from a quick online petition of people that weren't able to be here today, mostly, but I'll leave it with you, again, I think, the smallest spattering of people here today that were able to come to us, our opinions, speaks volumes. And I hope you reconsider that.
Okay. Was it just people who couldn't be here? Do they have a certain opinion?
Those were people that agreed to stop, do not proceed with what we've been presented to proceed with, that we would like to reconsider and look at other options before we move forward.
All right, thank you.
Chairwoman, would it be possible to hear from our representative from DA Davidson? Because I think to help explain option one, which hopefully doesn't have the favor of the room, but I think it would be helpful for the public, I mean, we're in a public meeting, we're being recorded, I think it would help to understand the financing aspect of option ones, that voters in the county can get a better idea of. If we do that, here's what that looks like, and here's how potentially going forward, what's been presented in plan could theoretically work, sort of assuming that rebidding on the bid packages, that we're not favorable, come in favorable around two. I just think that would give a better perspective for both the views and for the constituents as well. I'm not saying I'm in favor, or I'm favorable, but I think it would help be helpful.
This is DA Davidson, and this is the company, this is Nate.
Nate, sorry.
He is our fiduciary advisor, so.
I apologize, I walked in after the presentation started. Can you remind me what option, is it option one? Is that the option to?
That's the option to accept what I would call quote-unquote good bids, reject high bids or no bids, and receive floor with the design schematic assessment.
Sure. So the portion that I can speak to would involve how we would go about financing some of the cost of around the construction bid. To that extent, there is a way that we can structure the bond issue to generate some additional funds for the project fund. That would involve structuring the bonds in such a way that investors are presented with a larger coupon interest payment on the bonds themselves, so the county would be paying a higher interest rate on the bonds, however, on the front end of the bond issue, those investors, because the coupon payment is higher than what the market would be, the county is compensated for that by the investor paying a higher face amount for the bond. So for example, if the bond is a hundred thousand dollars, the investor says, okay, the county is offering a higher coupon interest rate, and so I'm going to perhaps pay a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that one hundred thousand dollar bond. So effectively, the yield on the bond winds up being what the market yield would be, the premium is realized by the county into the project fund, and it's made up by essentially a higher, slightly higher debt service levy to repay the bond. That being said, since the referendum and some of the estimates were originally laid out for the building, we've actually entered into a bond market where interest rates have been falling quite precipitously, over the last couple of months especially. And running some calculations on doing the original issue premium structuring on the bonds, we believe we can generate enough premium on the front end, and also keep the debt service levy at or below some of the, what was presented to the public in some of the bond referendum educational materials. I had seen a figure that talked about ninety-five cents per thousand in some of the pre-referendum materials, and that's right about there, a little bit below even is likely where we wind up, based on where the market is today. Does that?
It does. I mean, I just think it would be beneficial for people to understand it, how it theoretically works. But also, that means that the interest rate, the coupon rate, to do that option is going to be higher than what the market would bear. So it's a way to generate more dollars for the county upfront to help get the thing built, but alternatively, it's going to cost more interest. It's paying a four or five percent clip where the market might bear a three percent repayment rate or less. Thank you. Anyways, I just wanted the public to hear that. The one positive out of all of this is that you're spot on, the ten-year treasury's down, the rates are favorable. That probably hasn't been addressed as a pro or a con, but the opposite could happen just as easily as what we've seen with the current rates dropping. It's something to at least consider, but it's going in the right direction, thankfully.
Yeah, from a bonding perspective, the interest rates are, we're really close to historically lowest rates, we're getting close to that again. And so from a bonding perspective, it's a great time to issue bonds. I can't speak to the construction environment with where bids are coming in, and the county can also consider what construction inflation would be, have to take a step back and rebid things, I don't know. But those are things that are outside of my realm, but as far as interest rates go, interest rates are low, and there are ways that we can generate the additional premium to be able to issue the bonds that the county still chooses.
Nate, I think the original bonds we issued, I think it was eighty-seven cents, if I remember right. Maybe the marketing materials did show something like eighty-five and ninety-five, and that's what you mentioned was ninety-five, but it's going to cost a taxpayer more. I mean, there is no magic here, it's.
Likely. The unknown is that if rates were to stay low over the next decade, there would also be an opportunity to refinance the bonds in the future. And so that's the unknown part in the bonding formula, is that we don't know where rates are going in the future. And so if there were an opportunity to refinance the bonds, that's the unknown quantity on our end.
Thank you.
Thank you. See, some new people have arrived. Did you guys want to come and partake in the public hearing? Okay. Welcome to come up to the podium and state your name and address.
Oh, I'm not, I just wanted to see what's going on.
Okay. Okay, let's give this one last call, and then we'll go ahead and close this public hearing.
Everybody else is fine with this snowball now?
So you can come up and state your name and address the board, please.
Yeah, so you told me, Jared, if you want me to open my name?
No, I can totally think, I just didn't know who it was.
Already been up here once, but after hearing about the bonds, is there a way to quantify? It sounds like he's got a way to pull money, more money into bonds. What's the net cost to taxpayers here if we built this now with that more money option?
Ains, Dean Emery. When I got out of this last gentleman come out here, just made this, no offense to him, in just layman terms, what he's telling me is, I need to wash my wallet, because it's going to cost me more money if you juggle the books. It's like a car dealer tells you, well, this is what it's going to cost, but if we adjust this, 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 and this, we could still make it happen and make you feel good, but you're still going to get screwed in. So that's all I can say about it, it's just, guys just need to drop this thing and move on.
May as well keep with the theme of people who have already talked about it. And it comes up, it's in Dear Black West of the Avenue. Is there, given what we know now, so I went to the pre-bond meetings, and the concern with moving it off of the square was what goes in its place. So is there an opportunity, and basically what I heard in those pre-bond meetings was if we move it off of the square, there's a potential that it's going to be lower cost, because on the square has to be a four-faced building, it has to look good on all four faces. If it's off the square, it can make one face look pretty, do the rest, not fancy. So that's one question that I have, is is there an option that maybe is lower cost if it's moved off the square, and we have a plan for what goes back on the square? Thank you.
Rick Ruble, 1315 North Seventh Street. My biggest problem with moving it off the square is everybody voted to have it on the square. I guess if I went to an architect and said, build me a house, a pole barn, this, that, whatever, upgrade, it's going to cost you this. Less than a year later, they come back, and well, you know, we can do that, but we're going to have to move you to the south side of Des Moines and downsize your house and, you know, do all this, but we'll come in and hit your numbers. Back to, how did they come up with the numbers that was originally going to work on this? Was it just thrown together to present us with something to go, yes? What are we into it for now, that we've got the courthouse down? What did that cost? Now, we've had the courthouse gone, you know, which there's some people who wanted it gone, you know, but people wanted it on the square. You pull it off that square, might as well level the whole thing, have it at Park.
I think we're ready to go into some presentations. I would take a motion to close the public portion of the hearing of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Sho.
Aye.
Dekook.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Okay, I did see Shai Hattery come in, they are our architect engineering firm, so I would like you to go ahead and come to the podium. There were some questions that were asked. One of the main concerns was, how did the first campaign, not first, but the second bond referendum, how were the numbers come up with, and where did all of that come from? Certainly this board, they're not architects, and we do have them, and we hired them for a reason, so.
Morning, heard you gave Shai Hattery. Part of the numbers gave, and DCI group can speak to this as well, had to do with a disconnect between what the program was and what the bond ended up being.
What was the disconnect then?
Well, the disconnect was that based on our programming exercises and our meetings with the department heads and the user group, there was a 7,000 square foot discrepancy. So based on some numbers that were compiled by both my boss and by DCI group, indicated that the facility that was needed, based on the square footage and the programming exercises resulting from the meetings with those department heads, excuse me, was intended to be somewhere between 33 and 34 million dollars. Now, I understand the history of the matter, and that the bond was something that was that was altered after the first referendum failed. What I mean by the discrepancy is that the 80,000 square foot building was not able to be accomplished for the bond amount. And so the discussion prior to last November's election was, well, how do we get it to 299? And without having any documents in place or anything fully designed, it was, well, the easiest way is to take 7,000 square feet out of that, reducing the programming square footage to 73,000. As the meetings progressed, both public and with the user groups, it became evident that that 73,000 square feet, once you got into the details of it, was not going to be functional for each of the departments. And so essentially, we had a discrepancy from day one. So I know personally you're aware of this, but for those that aren't, we're in a bit of a hard position. I am also in a bit of a unique position in that, yes, I'm on the architectural team, on the design team, but I'm also a taxpayer of Warren County. So I have the intimate knowledge of the process and what happened, but I can also see the taxpayer side of things. So I think what we need to keep in mind is, we've gone down this road knowing that the 80,000 square foot building, while it doesn't accomplish everything, it does allow for expansion, and it does provide a facility that is useful and functional for all the departments involved, for the county. So the thing I think that is the most important right now is, how do we get this functional facility built without delay, without inflation costs, additional funding on behalf of the Sheriff's Department to house inmates out of county, all of those types of things that will cost the county money unless we move forward in the most economical path possible. That said, I can also see the financial aspect that Nate alluded to. You know, if there is a possibility of adjusting financing based on low interest rates to fund the project properly without exceeding the original intent of the bond information, the public awareness campaign information, as a taxpayer, that's the path forward that I see, that I recommend. You know, we've had these exhaustive meetings to know that while this isn't the Taj Mahal of courthouses, it will meet the county's needs, and it does have the ability to expand in the future as the county needs it to. Any other commentary you'd like to expound upon?
This one, sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to some of these questions. I believe it was the first gentleman that came up, Conrad, is that right? Emmett. Why were the plans really, you said it, 10 to 15 million over? That's a really high number, but I would say more of in the 37 to 38 million dollar range with the underground parking, and what was presented to the public? Question number two, putting all the options on the table, how long is the expectancy of the current building? So DCI, do you want to address that, or Shai? You guys may as well stay up in the front, because we're going to have a lot of questions for you. So excluding the price of the building right now, I'd like to know how long before we will need to remodel? And of course, that's based on user input and needs going forward. So what is the expectancy of the building right now? If it's built the way it is right now, that?
I don't think DCI can answer that for you. I don't have any information or consultation that's provided us as a group, I believe, of what growth's going to be and whatnot to make that decision. Someone may know something, but I personally, and I don't think DCI does.
Shai Hattery can make educated guesses for the projections of the facility. Part of the reason that we went down the road of allowing for expansion on two fronts of the building, and by that I mean a jail expansion and a court expansion, is to allow for minimal construction costs to keep up with the projected needs of the facility. Now, our ultimate goal was to design a facility that would last a minimum of 30 or 40 years. Now, depending on how population growth and crime trends manifest, you know, that could be sooner or later. It's really hard to predict, but the forethought that we in the county have put into allowing for the future expansion is designed to help mitigate that. So while Christopher Patterson spoke to the need for six courtrooms, the building has a plan in place for an addition that would add the fifth and sixth courtrooms, while there are only four now. In terms of the jail, there is a plan in place to add additional bunks to the current facility to achieve somewhere in the neighborhood of 80 beds without an addition. And then there is a secondary plan for an actual physical addition that would add another 32 beds, increasing the bed count to 120. Now, based on the annual, or the average daily population that the sheriff is experiencing, you know, we've come close to a 30% increase since design started. We were somewhere in the neighborhood of the low 40s when we started, and now we're, and the sheriff might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but mid 60s, I believe, in average daily population. So having those extra 32 beds, that extra 32 bed addition in our back pocket is to help, as I said, mitigate the longevity of the project with minimal construction required. You know, beyond that, you know, it is, it's like, if we had a crystal ball, great. You know, we're trying to do our best to use crime trends and growth projections of population to help inform those decisions. And we feel that we have delivered on that, it's just, it's very hard to know for sure.
I know back in 2015, 16, with the citizen group, Shai had actually conducted a nine month survey, going through the users, talking to county department heads, and gathering all that information so that they could make a really informed decision about the courthouse and jail.
That's correct. The way we approach every project, not just this one, is we really need to get a good handle on what the end users need. That way, it gives us some latitude to figure out, okay, what is needed and what is wanted? You know, it's that classic want versus need discussion. And so over the course of that process, we can then sort of weed out, okay, well, these are your needs, right? These are the immediate needs. These are your future needs, and these are your, would be nice to have. And so what we try to do throughout the design process is to get everybody's buy-off from each department, from each group that will be housed in this facility, to make sure that we are headed down the right road for the county's long-term benefit.
Okay, headed down the right road. So answer me this then. If you knew our current needs and you knew our future needs based on these projections, why was the contract given to the board supervisors last year for an amount of, that you could build our future building for current needs and future needs at 28.65 to 31.35 million?
Those numbers are construction cost numbers? Overall project cost numbers include soft costs such as design fees, CM fees, land acquisition, infrastructure, some of those types of things, which, DCI, is that somewhere around 5 million soft costs at the moment? So that 28 to 30 becomes 30, yeah, 30 to 35, so, I'm sorry, 32 to 35. So there's a difference between overall project costing and construction costing. So while the facility itself may cost that, the overall project costs are still, still have about $5 million of soft costs included in that, which also includes design and under seen condition contingencies that every project has.
So you're telling me that you told the board last year that the price for just construction would be 28 to 31? And so the board went to the public and said, 299, we need that addition to put with our 1.2 that we're setting aside. That'll meet the cost, just construction. So where did you think we were going to come up with this other million?
Well, to be frank, we've been. To, to be frank, we've been, not myself personally, but, but myself and Mike Lewis, my partner at Shai Hattery, have been giving the indication that it was going to be at least thirty-three to thirty-four million dollars from the get-go, which equates to where we're at with the twenty-eight million dollar construction costs and five million dollars in soft costs and land acquisition, those kinds of things that fall into that design contingency in this case. So, this goes back to the, to the, to the gap that I spoke about earlier. The eighty thousand square foot solution is not achievable as a thirty-one-one.
Okay, so were you at any of these public meetings? And did you express this to the public?
I, I do not recall my personal involvement. I know my colleague Mike Lewis at this, at this net with the board...
Did he express this to the board because I, I...
I cannot speak to that. I apologize. I cannot speak to what he did and did not say in a public forum. However, I do know there is documentation in place from both Shai Hattery and from DCI group indicating to the board that this was going to exceed the bonding amount of twenty-nine-nine plus the one point two additional funding coming from other funding streams through the county.
Okay, that would be great to see those documents. Let's go to some other questions here. Okay, someone talked about approving bid packages now and where are we at on these bid packages? All of the bids went out for this project and two were not bid on. One of the two is the very first thing that has to happen, and that is the rain of the site, went out to seventeen vendors and we received zero bids back. DCI has indicated that it was a problem of start date and that there aren't too many vendors because of the wet spring. We had many people who were busy at this point. Then there were about twelve million dollars worth of bids that came in where they expected and considered to be good bids. And this is one of the options that we've been presented by DCI is to keep those good bids and to rebid the ones that either didn't come in at all or came in too high. And my understanding of that is that we have sixty days to accept these bids, which that's what this meeting is about, to either accept all of them, to accept part of them, or to reject all of them. Okay, another question was where are we getting the money to pay for this? Well, with DA Agustin coming up, let me just give you my version of what he said, which is we can, my terminology, backdoor cash you in the reissuing of bonds to collect the interest off of that and be able to make up the difference, to make up the thirty-five million. It would be, I think it was between three point four and three point seven is the amount of money that we would make in millions. And the calculated payback is going to be about seven point two out of your pocket. The cost of that for an average, for a hundred thousand dollar home is seven dollars and sixty-three cents a year increase. And you may say, oh, that's not a lot, but it's not what you agreed upon. And it's not what the board was told last year the cost should be. Okay, let's go on to another question here. Okay, why can't we cut our losses and do it right? I would love to do that. That, that is my first option, but I'm not the only one on this board. There has to be a consensus, not only with the board, but for the public to have a taste of wanting to go through another bond. And can you stomach having spent two point six million on this project already and possibly starting over? That's something that we have to deliberate. And this was just a comment that was made, the goals for the building by the users. Now, I, I've been involved with this, so I, I know what the goals, what they are for the users. We definitely need to be focused on not just our current needs, but the future needs. If we build a building that needs to be remodeled, to me, within twenty years or less, that is not a success and that's not a wise use of our tax dollars. So, those goals have been very clear from the beginning, but I don't think that they were communicated by the previous board because the users were not consulted when it came to the bond amount of this, of the last bond that was approved. Okay, then we were asked to reject the bid packages. One of the comments coming up. The current courthouse space is insufficient. Now, that was from Mr. Patterson. And I'm going to ask, is that the annex that you're talking about or the current building that's proposed now? That you said that the current courthouse space is insufficient?
Well, when I made the comment, excuse me, when I made the comment, I was speaking to the future space. The, but since your statement invited commentary on the current space that the court occupies, I would just remind the board that that space was constructed in a bit of haste and also it was constructed specifically as an interim solution to bring court operations back to Warren County. If you recall, the board calls and for the new board member, the court made a decision to cease operations at the, I guess, past Warren County courthouse. And we elected to move portions of our operations to Madison County as well as to Marion County. And in doing so, I believe the board heard feedback, received feedback from citizens that they wanted court operations back in the county. And I met with, at the time, Chair Sho, we were able to identify a space and move forward. Again, that was designed, by design, to be a temporary space. We are making the best of a bad situation, but we cannot commit to that being a longer term solution. We need for the board to address the court space needs.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And I think addressing the six courtrooms in the future building, the way that it's designed right now, it will be able to expand to the west and provide those two additional courtrooms, correct?
Correct, that's my understanding. Our concern specifically would be both the triggering mechanism, at what point, because as, when, during the course of our operations, we see that the caseloads are increasing. We know from census data that the population, the county's population is increasing at a set clip. We also know that the greater Des Moines area has been recognized by several publications as the fastest growing city in the Midwest. I heard a comment made earlier that Indianola, Warren County is a bedroom community of Des Moines. That growth is not going to stop north of or west or east of Des Moines. It's going to spill over into Warren County. The issue is, will the county have sufficient facilities for court operations to maintain rule of law, to promote successful businesses, and just all these services and amenities that courts provide? So, my concern is, at what point, as the, as the caseload continues to grow, at what point do we engage with the board and have a timely solution? So, we have, we will have four courtrooms to begin with. We know that in the next twenty years, we're going to need two additional courtrooms. How does the board address that? It's going to cost additional funds. If that happens, I heard you just say, if that happens within twenty years, it's going to make you question the efficacy of, of the, of the force of action that's been taken. If it happens after that, fine. But again, the question remains, at what point does that trigger? And then what is the timeline, the timeframe from when the board agrees to address the issue to those courtrooms actively becoming in service? So, that would be our, our concern because in that interim, the, the courts and the citizens and the user groups who use the court services, we will be hard-pressed to, to meet those needs on a day-to-day basis. That's our concern.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so where did these numbers come from for the cost of the bond? I think Shai Hattery cleared that up for you, I hope. And did we lose the third floor expandability? So, DCI, can you address the third floor? Is that still in the foundation?
No, it's not. Back in January, there was a long discussion after we, after Shai Hattery had completed the second stage of design development and we had completed our estimate. The third floor was discussed. At that time, we were discussing a lot of ways to reduce the cost of the building. There was discussion about what the county's projected use of the current facility was. Did it make sense to put a third floor on it if growth projections indicated that growth was going to exceed the physical ability to use that building? There was discussion of how you go about including a third floor on a building when there's occupants in the building. It's a little bit intrusive to be above you constructing a third floor as opposed to next to you. Next to you, you can continue to occupy this building. Above you, you're not going to want to be on this floor, you're going to have to get out of the building. So, there was a lot of considerations at that point. And the, the design direction at that time, there was consensus to not implement a third floor, but implement a design and a site plan that allowed the expansion to be maintained, but in a different direction.
Yes, it does. Now, last year, when this came up in the public and then I made it a big issue, why wasn't it explained at that point that having construction and moving those users out of there on that second floor, why wasn't that, instead of saying, oh, yeah, we can add a third floor?
I apologize. I wasn't even on the project at that time. And that question came up, if my recollection's correct, that question came up before the bond referendum.
Yeah, I think I can address that just because I was. At that time, I recall being, we, we were asked, can there be a third story? And I think things correct, it was prior to bond. Yes, obviously you can if you accommodate the structure. So, we simply said yes. Here's a projected cost of adding the foundations and the steel components that you can't go back and do. You have to have those in if you would ever address a third story. I think the change in direction happened because of budget. At DD, we were significantly overbudgeted and looking for cost ideas to bring the project down. One of those was to remove the element of the third floor cost structure to get the project more in line with the budget goal. The reason we were able to do that is because the basement was removed and now we could expand horizontally, which made more sense in the long term. You're right, Crystal, no one did bring it up. I sat here, I will, you know, you can blame me for not saying it's going to be more intrusive. It was simply, we were just responding to, can you do it? Yes.
I just wanted to understand how that...
Yes, it, it could have been explained that it's more intrusive to go vertically than horizontally. But once we eliminated the basement and the site got smaller, it made a whole lot more sense financially to allow for expansion horizontally than vertically.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. The next question that came up, did the City of Indianola have to say in the design of the building? The outside, yes. There was actually a citizen committee that was put together. I believe Randy Karns, who's in our audience today, was the chair of that. And Shai Hattery gave presentations of the outside and businesses as well as citizens from the city of Indianola had input on the outside of the structure. And to stay within budget, they were given certain elements that they could go with. So, I'm not privy to all of those, I only attended one of those meetings, but if Randy could want to address that, you can.
Sure. Yeah, as Crystal said, we had a series of meetings to go over the design. The business committee, of course, on the square were key factors. We also had other people from, you know, the county, so we had a mix of people on that committee. Went through several designs. I mean, Shai analyzed what was there, looked at historical, looked at growth, looked at modern. We really did a lot to come back with a variety of different features, finishes, looks and feels, as well as understanding that everything has a cost. I mean, we looked at beautiful courthouses like Dallas County and realized that they cost five times what we can afford. We also said, well, wait a minute, we never had one to preserve. Most of the counties with these beautiful ones had one and somehow came up with the money to preserve them. They also admit they don't meet their needs because they're physically constrained. So, we wanted a building that was more flexible, but yet still mixed in with what we had.
Thank you. Okay, and another comment was, have these meetings at night? Because of the contractors and the others in the room who have a part in this building, it was not even a thought to put it at night, but in the future, so... What's our current square footage today? As proposed in the campaign, it was always an eighty thousand square foot building, but seventy-three thousand was to be built out with seven thousand not built out and it was supposed to be an expansion for the courts. So, it has always been an eighty thousand square foot building, but the seven thousand reserved space has been built out. Okay. Does the current design meet current and future needs? I think we covered that. What would be the ramifications of stopping and redesigning, a new referendum in those options? I think of my mom, when I went to her after, first got married, and I told her I was pregnant. There's no turning back now. We're down this road. We have issued nine point five million of the twenty-nine point nine and we have spent two point six of that. Now, if you're comfortable with swallowing that two point six and restarting this over, that's an option. But at the same time, what do we do with the square? There is a hole in the square right now. So, if we do go to a referendum from here, it will be considerable more amount of money and we have to do something with the square. So, that's something to consider. What is the cost to the taxpayer in the end? We go forward with the current building... We go forward with the current building plan. Well, DCI has said that they could hold those good bids and go out and rebid. And the best price that we could get at this point is 35 million for a building that was not what you were expecting. I don't want to pay for a building that I don't think is going to fit our future needs, but I'm one of three. Um, I'd like to hear from Supervisor Scholl and Supervisor Dick Cook and where they are at.
Okay. The, uh, where I'm currently at, I think that number one, to do what I call the re-offering premium that DA Davidson talked about at somewhere around 3.5 million. I think somebody mentioned 3.4 to 3.7. I'm not in favor of that because I was in favor of the 29.9 million plus 1.2 million or whatever that we were going to take out of some funding balances. So I, I'm not in favor. I guess I look at, there's three potential claims. That would be one. Uh, the second one would be to go out and, uh, start over. And that means the architects would have to design a building that would live within our original means. And I know there's pros and cons to do that. And let's see, the third option would be to go back to the public and ask for additional funds, of which again, I'm not in favor of that. So my position at this point would be, uh, option number two, which would be redesign the building to live within our means.
Okay, um, here's what I got. For similar but different reasons, I, I'm leaning and I'll be a vote for, for number two. And, and here's why. Um, in part because of the way in which we can build what's been presented. And I do appreciate that the interest rates are down. And I do appreciate that our fiduciary, which is very important for those that are, are unfamiliar with that term, but, but we have a fiduciary that's helping with the bond and the financial aspect. And I, I for one greatly appreciate that. But just because there's a path to make this building work at its location doesn't mean in my mind, that's the right path. The, the re-offering premium, um, I, I don't want to pay a 5% debt repayment on the next tranche of $20 million if the market, which is going in the right direction for us thankfully, um, might mean that we could pay 2.5 or 3% for that debt. That's a lot of money on $20 million. And so initially, well, I thought if we, the alternative to raise money is going to be, you know, a one or two question referendum to the voters saying, do you approve more money? And in my mind, I think, geez, that's going to pass in about a million years now. Uh, because if we went to you all and said, what the county needs to serve today as well as down the future is more money, who's voting yes there? Who's going to vote yes there? Um, I don't know. I think, I think we'll get some, we have to get 60%. Um, based on my understanding of Warren County bond referendums, I'm not going to hold up my breath on that. But I compare that to, let's say it is, let's say we can pull $4 million by, someone said creative financing on, on the premiums. Okay. That's an option. Another option would be to go to the public and say, okay, we're $4 million short. Do you want to repay $4 million at 2.5%? Or do you want to repay $4 million at 5%? That's a worthwhile discussion to have because that's real money. Um, I, I can't swear that the interest rates in 10 years when those bonds could be callable. Um, if we're in an interest rate environment where the rates are up, they're not going to get called. And that's a big risk. If the rates are, are still low, they'll be called and the damage can be mitigated. So someone asked a question about how much would that really cost? And I think it's pretty difficult to figure out exactly how much it's going to cost other than we know would be assuming another 3.7 or 3.5 plus a high interest clip. But I think that's something that's worthwhile or worthy of your input and with your vote. That was one of my considerations. Another thing that I, um, I think's really, really important, someone hit the nail on the head by, by saying, we, we want to get this right. I want to get this right. Whether or not you know it, you really want to get this right because you're the ones and myself and everyone who lives here are going to pay for it. I, I don't desire to stall this project. I, I understand that from our sheriff's department, uh, we have 60-plus inmates that we're transporting. You're paying for that. That's not cheap. That's a lot of money. Um, and there's risk to those officers. There's risk to the inmates. And so it's not my desire remotely to, to drag this on longer or to take the risk of maybe the voters will say no. But I think sort of forcing this plan on you as presented with the budget constraints that we have and the creative financing to make it happen, I don't think that's what you all signed up for when we, when we passed this at 69%. Um, I think people thought there was going to be underground parking. I thought, people, people thought it could go up and there'd be some more green space on the square. I, I've heard people now see the possibility of the square and sort of look at that in a new light. I know that a lot of people are very intent on having retained a courthouse or justice center, especially the courthouse at the square location. I think as time goes on and people start seeing, um, the grass and weeds grow, I think at least in some minds, there's, there's possibilities of, is there a better option in long term? So my focus and goal in this is to do not only what's right today, but I, I don't want the courts to come back begging for additional space in five years at your expense. I don't want Ryan's office to, to continue to grow. I want people to stop committing crimes. That saves a lot of them too. But in the event that people keep moving here and in the event that crime rates and trends keep continuing, I don't want to have, um, that's a terrible scenario where we have, um, a jail that, that services today's needs. And while we then would stop the transportation expense and the risk of that, make no mistake about it, we're going to be hiring jailers. We're going to be hiring peoples to service the jail. So it's not a, we now don't pay for the transportation and so our costs decrease $800,000 a year or a million a year. Some of that's going to be recruited and staffing. And so it's not a, a perfect scenario. And in the event that we then start transporting prisoners beyond that, you're getting hit both ways on that. And so it would be my preference to reject the bids. Ooh, I had one other reason why I would reject the bids. Okay. Spoke with our county attorney. I spoke with Mr. Corey as, as well. And it doesn't sit right with me to accept six or seven good bid packages. For the, for the companies that voted, or the, the companies that submitted their bids that were appropriate, um, that were good bids, thank you. I appreciate that. I think it looks incredibly shady. It's not really a political term, but it's shady to accept those bids with a full understanding that we're going to then quote unquote, rebid the other part of it. If those bids come back high, what are we going to do with the good bids that we've accepted? We're going to terminate that contract. That, that opens us up to a lawsuit. Yeah, we can follow along and say, we're going to terminate for convenience. But what if one of those companies hires two or three employees in anticipation of the upcoming work? They can sue us and we very well might lose. I also think that it'd look quite terrible for this board to sit up here with a full understanding that that's the plan. We might accept these bids with real understanding that we're entering into a legal contract with those companies, but we don't really anticipate following through with that. I mean, that just goes to our intent as a board to knowingly violate the terms of those contracts. And that's, if I was one of those companies, I'd never bid on anything again for this company. I mean, I just wouldn't do it. So I don't, we do not like going down that route for accepting the good bids. For that reason, and because I don't like the creative financing where I think at a minimum, the public would save money if they, if the math was laid out exactly for you all to say, to get what you want, to get what you need for today and for the future, it's going to be X dollars more. Do you want to do that with creative financing that you pay a higher rate for? Or do you want to, do you want to bond at all, almost all-time historic lows? I think as much as people don't like paying more, I think if you lay it out to, to, to the folks that way, I, I think it might pass. And so I'm going to fall into the camp of, I want to do this right once. I want to do this right, um, so that it fits current needs, which we've heard from the courts that that's barely getting met and arguably not. And I don't want to have the users coming back to us in two, three, five, 10 years saying, okay, now it's time to expand. Christopher Peterson, the bright guy, I mean, when you hear him talk, his concern is that maybe they can make it work today, but what's the triggering mechanism to come back and hit it? That's because the Defense Judicial District has worked with Warren County before and he already foresees and they already foresee, when we have to come back, what's to say the new board is going to be gung ho to build anything for them? They, they know that. So I think it's time to do it right. Um, I, I dislike that there's going to be a break in the, in the timing. But let's also be realistic. We don't have a, we don't have a grading crew knowing bid on the land part of it, which means dirt work's not being done right now, which means nothing in the world's going to get built till next year anyways. I think we have a little window of time where we can get it right. Look at all options and, um, and that means all options. But we agree with the entirety of it. And I think that if we do it right and press, I think we can rebid before Christmas, which, which frankly, isn't going to stall out reality, which is nothing in the world's going to get built on the square location until next spring anyways. I mean, no one raised their hand to do the dirt work. And so if we press forward with what we have now, we're, we're ensuring the bids that we have, the good ones, on a project that's still not going to start till next year. So I think we use the window that we have to make a, a good decision that's good for now, but also good for the future and that is financed appropriately. So I'm going to be, I'm going to be a reject all bids. Option two is going to be my vote.
All right. Thank you. Okay, um, I guess I had a little more questions for DCI and Shai. Your responsibility, DCI, was to provide the board guidance and cost estimates throughout the spending days and to make sure that we were on budget. And that at the last cost estimate, right before the bids went out, they were underfunded. So considering that, that error with the way the bids came in, came in 23% over. As a board, I want to ask you why this discrepancy? Why the large discrepancy? I could see 3% to 6% with market and with tariffs, but at 23%, why?
I'm not, I'm not positioned to dispute your percentage. I'm just going to reference the checkpoints very particular. After we opened bids, uh, we went out to the market, talked to bidders who bid on the project, talked to bidders who didn't bid on the project, to find out why we had some areas that were good, why we had some areas that were bad. I had mentioned to you all individually during, um, the three or four weeks that we were out to bid, that the feedback we were getting at that time, the market was saying, the guys that have work or the majority of their work was in 2020, they were very excited about the project. And we saw that on bid day. The guys that were looking at that work or they were going to have to be here tomorrow, were not excited about the project. And again, bid results showed that. We consulted a couple of the general contractors that bid the project, as well as some subcontractors, as well as some material vendors, and just asked all sorts of questions. The answers to some of those questions in some cases, we only had one masonry contractor to bid this job. This job has a lot of masonry in it. The basement is essentially, all the interior walls are essentially masonry. The whole facade of the building is masonry. There's masonry in the detention area inside the building. We only have one masonry contractor. That doesn't create a lot of competition. From a material aspect, uh, we found out that we only had one material vendor submit costs for the masonry products. That doesn't create much competition. We only received, uh, the, the bidders only received one vendor number for all the millwork, casework and finished carpentry in the building. That's a huge scope, but only one bidder. There are others, but those were, those were the big market conditions, um, that we can't project or reflect. I mean, we don't, we, we solicit as many peoples as we can, but we can't force them to participate in the process.
Nick, can you, can you address for the public and the board, timing of bids? What's your, what's your ideal preference in a, a first-scale job like this? Because I've, I, I'm, I think that if.
Absolutely.
If you have a different preference of, is it better to bid in the fall or Christmas time or May?
Never around Christmas.
You tell us.
You know, initially, within a week of the board setting the cost of the project and setting the language for the bond referendum, we produced in collaboration with Shai Hattery, a schedule. A schedule that took all of us through the whole design project of when we were going to bid. At that time, we were going to bid the first week of April. That's when I wanted to bid. That's when I always, I mean, I prefer any time after New Year's through April to me on a project of this type and scale, is the time to bid. We didn't bid till the first week of July. That's not the time to bid on, on this type of project. Now, there's other things, you know, we were doing renovation. Timing year doesn't impact that to that, to this degree. But the timing of, of when we bid did not help and that, again, bids reflected that.
What was the holdout?
Well, on those checkpoints that were on that schedule that is referred to, that first checkpoint was the beginning of October and we hit that. That was schematic design estimate. The next estimate was design development. Um, we, we had the scheduled, did a couple of days before Christmas. It didn't, it didn't get fully, um, reviewed by you, the board, until the end of January. Now, what, what were you, what were we dealing with at that point? You're dealing with the holidays. You're dealing with the board changing. Um, you're dealing with having to educate the new member of the board. you're dealing with having to educate the new member of the board, where we were at and where we're at today. So we got a little off track there. But that's not the substantial slip. The substantial slip, excuse me, from that point forward is where things got off track. Because our estimate at design development, I believe was somewhere in the neighborhood of $36 million. And during the month of January through February, design wasn't, I guess, progressing the way it normally would because we were all, what we were discussing at that point was, what do we need to relook at and decide whether these things need to stay in the project? And earlier I referred to the third floor. That's when the whole third floor discussion happened. That's when it was decided not to be the third floor anymore. And that's just one item. I mean, there were dozens of items that we had set in the meetings of Shai Hattery. We had what we call a VE list. You know, I can't remember how many items were on that list, but it was in the neighborhood of thousands of items that were considered. So until the decision was made regarding those items and whether those items were going to be implemented or removed, design kind of halted at that point. Once those decisions were made, we moved on. That took some time. You know, I don't know how you could have made that, you couldn't make it disappear, you had to deal with it. I think it was dealt pretty efficiently in terms of the time aspect. But the problem is, it affected a spring bid and turned it into a summer bid. And that obviously didn't bode well.
Now, you brought up your value engineering list. Were those implemented by Shai? Did they take?
They took the items that were agreed to at the meeting and removed those, yes.
Okay. So from your cost estimate before pre-bid, and then when bids came out, were those plans, did they contain the value of engineering? It just seems like there's just such a discrepancy. From the plans that you saw and you gave us within budget, to how much the bids were off, were those plans different?
You're referring to, I think you're referring to our last measurement, Crystal, by contract of 50% CD. So we don't measure it right before we go out to bid because you might as well get the bid results at that point to make decisions. At 50% CD, our budget was $33.2 million. And there was a laundry list of VE still associated with that. We never quit value engineering to get within target goals. There's $2 million, and I was explaining two meetings ago, that we feel like ended up in the drawings or was just details that caused bidders to add $2 million worth of work. So if we would have measured it at bid day, we'd have been at $35 million. The $2 million we cannot, it's market. We can't do anything. We do our best to predict the building elements, but we can't predict market. I think I've said that several times in this room. There is the discrepancy from the very beginning of program versus what the bond was. I think Kurt tried to explain that as simple as I can explain it. Is 80,000 square foot never costed $29.9 million?
Did you go out to the public to explain that to the public?
I do have a document. We were not hired prior to pre-bond to provide an estimate. We provided an estimate to Shai, which does say 33.7 million dollars. And I certainly can provide that.
Okay. You weren't hired to help with the marketing of the campaign?
Budgeting is what I just referred to, not marketing. The decision to go to 29.9 was a question to DCI group. And our response was, you're going to have to dramatically cut square foot. The result of that was $73,000.
So it is your professional opinion that the public was disinterested grossly on the cost of this project from the get-go?
An 80,000 square foot building, the estimate was provided. And I think Kurt already said that, $33.5 million.
Right. But my problem is that that wasn't conveyed to the public.
Yeah. I don't know what the decisions were made to, how do we get it through that amount? And square footage was the result. And that's why the bond, the bond language represents we were measuring two buildings up until AD, a smaller square footage and a larger. At that point, the smaller square footage did not make sense from a program standpoint, so we continued on the AD, just because it wouldn't work from the user's standpoint.
Okay, I understand that. All right. Another question for DCI. What is the next step? Should we reject all of these bids? You're obviously going to be doing some value engineering. So what would some of that look like? What are some of the options?
Yeah, that's a multifaceted task. If you reject all bids today, and your direction is, folks, go redesign, as Brandon mentioned, Kurt mentioned, there's this lack of relationship between square footage and cost to date. Someone, the county in general, is going to have to tell the design professional some parameters to work around. Just like before. I mean, just initially, initially, you're telling the design professional the programming of who's going to be in the building. You're going to have to do that again.
Isn't that why we hired you? I mean, we've come up with the money. Where's the leadership for you to go to Shai and tell them, this is what the board has asked us to do?
Well, my contract is with the county. Shai Hattery's contract is with the county.
Yes.
Shai Hattery is not under any contractual obligation to answer to DCI group. I can't direct the architect, but they answered to you, the board. I answered to you, the board. DCI is.
And we have directed you on our budget. We have directed you to the square footage of the building. What more do you need?
Well, we've told you that the square footage of the building doesn't equal $31 million.
Okay.
Brandon mentioned that earlier. It's the case of, you're telling us a fixed square footage and a fixed amount of dollars. And we're telling you, you can't accomplish a fixed square footage.
Then why wasn't this mentioned last year? Why are we just now hearing this? Our budget, it will not be more than $32 million. Get that through your head. Now go do your job. And build us an 80,000 square foot building for $32 million or less.
Well, let me address some things, Crystal. For one, it's not our money, so we can't, we can't tell you what to spend. But we've provided four estimates, none of which were at $31 million. So I'm not sure why we're being in question of what information we provided.
Can you not cut fixtures?
We provided 33, an estimate to start with at 33.6. At schematic design, it was 34.7.
I know the numbers, Brandon. What can you do from this point going forward to cut what is going into that building?
I don't think, I don't think we.
That finishes.
I don't think DCI can help, Crystal, until we have direction on one of what Nick just explained. You either need to determine, because 73,000 square foot doesn't equal 29.9 or 31.1. It's going to be more than that. We would have to reprogram as Nick mentioned to even tell you what that's going to cost. So this is something we can't provide you until there's, option two is our best option to advise you on if you want to maintain a budget, which I believe is what we're hearing. But the consequence of that, no different than when it was at pre-bond, is you're going to end up with some program. We don't know what that square footage might be. We can work through to determine what $32 million or what $31 million is going to get you. We don't know that today. So you're going to have to reprogram. Frankly, it might be 60,000 square feet, it might be 65. We don't know the answer. And programming is not a responsibility of DCI group. That's a responsibility of your designers. So we can't answer to the programming elements.
But don't you help us in that?
Yeah, I believe we have. We've provided cost estimates, like our contract says, to help you guys guide decisions. But we can't make the decision. It's not our money.
I believe that there has been a professional level of care that has not been met. In the contract that we have with you, DCI, 6.2 in your contract says that, spells out that if you don't do what we have asked you to do to stay within budget, then we can negotiate going forward. I think we have, I think it's been pretty clear since last year what the budget was. And you may say, well, we told you it was going to be 33 million or more, but you knew what the budget was going in. And Shai knew also. And yet with Shai, the contract, the implication was a $28 to $31 million building. And in your contract at 6.6 also states that your professional level of care was not met for Warren County. And if that is not met, then we can negotiate going forward. From what I've heard from the public today, nobody's happy with this building. Even the users are not happy with this building. Indianola doesn't seem to be happy with what's going on on the square. I would like to give Shai and DCI some deadlines to get this redesigned. But I really don't know if, from what you just said, that this is going to be an impossible path. And we don't want to have a building that has the square footage that will never fit the needs of the users. So I don't know if legally we should just fire you and start over and hire someone who can give us a building at 8,000 square foot to go back on the square? Or if we should just shut this whole project, go somewhere else, and do something different on the square? But that would have to be the citizens. You have to agree to do that. And that's bringing a bond before you. And it has to pass with 60%. And I don't know if that's a risk that I want to take to have a bond fail and we're right back where we started. So I'd like to ask the board to propose a motion and see if we can keep this ball rolling. Because every day we stall this project, we are definitely costing more money. We're getting a smaller building for more money. If you want to stay with DCI and Shai at this point, we need to have some kind of deadlines. Cost in redesign, I don't think the taxpayers are going to want you to redesign something at their cost. I think you owe it to Warren County to reuse this again if you, if the board agrees to retain you. Cut out the fluff. Maintain the user ability in the building.
Don, we probably need some help with that motion.
You need to make a motion, Mr. General Counsel. Two of you have talked about what you want to do, make a motion for it based on that.
I'll make a motion to reject the bids. And it's painful to do so because we do have some quality bids in there. But I think it's pretty evident at this point that there is a lot of disconnect between what's been presented, what people expect, in addition to the bond number that was set before. So at this point, I don't think it's fair to the good bids that are there to accept those bids and reject the rest where we know that there's, as it stands, by accepting this designs and size and scope, that we'd really be looking at another real likelihood or real possibility that we're going to be in sort of this position and then have to cancel those contracts for convenience. Otherwise, I just don't, I think that just bleeds down a path that's going to suit, that I'd prefer to avoid. And so I think that the most appropriate option, but I sure don't like making decisions where all options are poor and then make the best of the poor choices. But I think it is option two to reject all bids. And so my motion, Don, would be to reject all bids at this time.
Second.
So first, the first item is to consider the plan specification proposed contract and the estimated cost.